Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, June 12, 2017. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner: First, on January 10, 2017, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Tri-Town News; Second, on January 10, 2017, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell; Third, on January 10, 2017, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Armata? I have not heard from him. Mr. Cardalicchio?
Present.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell's been excused. Mr. Posh?
Here.
Mr. St. Clemente?
Here.
Mr. Turk?
Here.
Mr. Bloom?
Here.
And Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a floor.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Troply, would you please swear in the professionals, please?
I would like to first ask this team to introduce her fellow colleagues.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I just want, for those of you who are not aware, tonight is my last meeting with you all, but I want to introduce you to Mika. She's taken over from CME, and she's here tonight to meet you guys and to get a flavor for how you guys run your meeting, and she'll be sitting in on behalf of CME moving forward.
Okay. Jim, before that happens, we want to thank you for your time here, and I want to thank you for all you have taught me. You know, I've been here a long time, and you've been here a long time. Not as long as Jack, but, you know...
I think that'd be a little difficult.
Nobody's been here as long as Jack, that's for sure.
But the two of you guys have really...I want to thank you for all you've helped me with, taught me, and it's just been such a pleasure to be associated.
Well, thanks, guys. I'll miss you guys.
Jen, it's been an honor and a pleasure.
You can always come back. I'll come back and visit.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I do.
I would like that this team, Malvika Appe, now sworn, Sheriff Spiro, and Mr. Mallon, again, all sworn for the meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Troply. Approval of minutes, regular meeting, May 8, 2017. Eligible voters: Armata, Cardalicchio, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, St. Clemente, Turk, Bloom, and Nansen. Can I have a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Cardalicchio.
Second.
Second by Mr. St. Clemente. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cardalicchio?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. St. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Turk?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Vouchers?
We have no vouchers this evening.
Correspondents?
The only correspondence I have was already emailed to the members, with the exception of an email from Jennifer Krimko. She is the attorney for Wildbrook Ranch, which was on tonight's agenda. There was a problem with the notice in the paper, which is why they've asked to move their application to July 10, and they will be noticing for that hearing date as well.
July 10?
Yes.
Are they the first case?
No, they will be second. We have the interpretation...appeal for Mr. Parisius first, and Wildbrook will be second.
Uh, Mr. Mallon, how long...Mr. Troply, how long do you think...I know you're not involved with that case, but...
Have we heard anything? One never knows, Mr. Chair, when it comes to that particular application, but I think, given the public's interest in Wildbrook, at some point in time, you may wish to...again, this is my opinion, maybe limit him to an hour or so, hour and a half, and then say we're starting Wildbrook at a certain time, because it's got great public interest already, and I think, from what I understand, even though I'm conflicted out of Parisi, that it's been substantially heard. I could be wrong, but...
Yeah, but they were supposed to have professional testimony. Y'all have nothing?
I don't have anything yet.
And that was for July 10, correct?
July 10, so they got to the end of the month.
Well, then perhaps, you know, an executive decision would have to be made at that time if there's no submittals done within the timeframe prescribed by the MLUL. Maybe they should be bounced.
He did ask me if that was a hard and fast bait, July or June 30, to have his paperwork in.
Yes.
And I told him it was, and I said that's to give everyone a chance to review it. And I said it's also public is allowed to come in and see it 10 days ahead, so if it's not here, I said, you'll have to move your case. The second meeting in July, right now, has nothing on it, so if either one had to get carried again, they both expire July 31st, so we possibly could maybe start at least here, one, start here and the other, and they finish them on the 24th.
Okay. Case number BA-16-06, Wildbrook Ranch LLC. This case will be moved to July 10?
Yes.
7:30 with new notice?
Yes.
Okay. Expiration date, did they extend the expiration date?
July 31, 2017.
Expiration date has been extended to July 31, 2017. Thank you. Okay, any other correspondence?
No other correspondence.
Okay.
And no resolutions.
I was just fixing to ask you that. So no resolution. Okay, application before the board, case number BA-16-10, SMC Properties LLC, preliminary and final major site plan, and Woodlands Management. Application of SMC Properties LLC as applicant, VNS Lawn and Landscape Inc., as owner seeking preliminary and final major site plan, and Woodlands Management Plan approval to construct a one-story senior citizen assisted living building consisting of 30 bedrooms, 18,680 square feet on the premises known as block 183 lot 22, 985 Route 33. The application was scheduled to be heard on May 8, 2017, when it was carried to June 12, 2017. Expiration date, June 30, 2017. Eligible voters: Armata, Cardalicchio, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, St. Clemente, Bloom, and Nansen. And at this point, we have a full board with our alternates filling in.
Except Mr. Turk is not eligible to vote, unless you...
This is bifurcated.
So he's good to vote. We're good to vote.
Right. You are eligible. Okay.
Todd, you're going to do the home presentation, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, but the other thing is, the owner's not here to testify.
Mr. Chairman, if we could start, and then we could address those things, I can't talk right now.
Mr. Cohen, if you want to...
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Todd Cohen representing the applicant, SMC Properties LLC. As you'll recall, on April 24, the zoning board did grant a use variance to construct the facility you described, the assisted living and memory care facility with the 30 beds, and certain variances, and wave...design waivers were also granted, which are outlined in Section 3 of CME's new review letter of June 12. They're also in the resolution that was previously granted. Since that time, and now we're seeking preliminary and final site plan approval for what was shown to you at the time of the use.
Okay. Can I...Mr. Troply, okay, so basically, this is a...you know, it's just to finalize, the use variance portion's already over?
It's over, and it wasn't bifurcated. This is a final preliminary and final site plan application, and, Mr. Chair, as far as I'm concerned, all we need, and this is the testimony from the engineer...
Okay.
The use variance is law the case at this point in time, and I see no reason why, respectfully, that the alternate can't hear. I mean, it's a new application.
Okay.
So I'm fine with that. I see no impediment whatsoever, and...
Mr. Cohen?
Right.
Are you okay with that?
Right. If you could just briefly put a background on it through Mr. DiFolco would probably be helpful.
Absolutely.
But I'll submit. Thank you.
To bring the board up to speed since our last time, also, Mr. DiFolco has met with Mr. Mallon, as was recommended, to discuss the redesign of the drainage facility, and that's indicated in the plans that were submitted, and also in Mr. Mallon's review letter dated June 8. And Mr. DiFolco also consulted with the New Jersey Department of Transportation regarding the Route 33 access and the future improvements for this part of Route 33, and we're prepared to talk about that this evening as well.
Your voice isn't deep enough, Todd.
Sorry about that. Let me start over, or no?
Nope.
Okay. So with that, I believe we should have Mr. DiFolco sworn. We have two exhibits to mark, and we can begin the application.
Okay.
Swear the testimony this evening, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth of God.
Yes, I do.
State your name and what you testified tonight, please.
Richard DiFolco, D-I-F-O-L-C-O, testifying for the licensed engineering part of this application, and perhaps in planning, too, I'm not sure, but we're going to be testifying for the site plan portion of this application for SMC.
Okay. We had two new exhibits to mark. One was A-23. Could you identify that and for the board, please?
We marked them already, Tom. We won't go on.
You already marked it.
A-23 is a snapshot of the landscape plan in color, which just highlights the buffering that is proposed between the site improvements and the neighboring residential lot to the north and the farmland buffer to the west.
And A-24 is a driveway permit...driveway access permit application to be filed with the NJDOT as part of our overall application, which is signed by the owner of Lot 21, which is the owner to the rear that has the access easement to the property, Mr. Stephen Mount. Is that correct?
That is correct. The owner of the land adjacent to us, who has a driveway easement out to 33, is joining in with us to make a joint application for a single driveway cut to New Jersey State Highway 33.
And his signature on that shows that he acquiesces to the design, is that correct?
Yes, he consents to the alignment and placement of the driveway and the connection to the proposed 30-foot wide driveway by this applicant.
And his signature was required by the NJDOT, is that correct?
Yes, we need applications from both users of the driveway.
Okay. Thank you. Would you put your qualif...did you do his call?
Yes, please.
His qualifications being continued as of the last time, would be accepted as a...
Well, the new application, let's go ahead and do it. We re-swore him.
Well, if we didn't bifurcate...did we bifurcate it, or did we not bifurcate it?
At the end, you bifurcated. You bifurcated at the end of it.
You voted separately. Yeah. Okay.
We are moving.
You're the chairman, so...
Just briefly, give us your educational background, just to keep the record clean.
Sure. I'm a licensed engineer, state of New Jersey. I graduated Rutgers University, and I'm licensed since 1977 as a licensed engineer.
Thank you. We accept your qualifications.
Thank you.
Pitch, would you briefly describe to the board the plan before them and the access that we have worked out?
Yeah, so, when we were here last, there was a single sheet handout that I prepared which talked about an alternate way to do the driveway alignment. If you remember, the original plan had like a...almost like a dead-end lot. Once you pulled in, you had to do a K-turn to get out of the lot. So what we've come up with, a couple of things have changed. The building that is proposed is the same size building that we had last time, but what we did was we took the outside covered porch off the back, and we put it at the end of the building, so that we were able to move the building further to the east to allow room for this circular pattern to develop, staying out of the farmland buffer. When that little appendage, the porch, was on the back, it pinched us too tight, and we couldn't have a 30-foot driveway. So now we have a 30-foot proposed driveway, two-way driveway into the site from 33, and we have a 30-foot aisle in front of the building. We continued to propose a 24-foot loop around the side with parking on it, but the 30-foot is up the driveway and in front of the building. So that's one site plan change we made. More importantly is, we met with the DOT, and what has happened is that even though there is a deed easement for a driveway that runs the side property, if you recall, there's a 10-foot wide deeded easement across this property, our property, to the owner of Lot 21, who's directly behind us. Even though that there's a deed at easement, the regulation is going to hold that only one driveway cut per lot is allowed. So we need to share that curb cut with the neighbor to the rear, and after several alignments, this alignment was approved by the owner to the rear. He has a very large, like a camper bus, almost 40 feet long. We had one driveway alignment which came down to 33, did a hard turn, and another hard turn. He could not make that turn with his vehicle. So he approved this alignment, and if the board is so inclined to approve this, then we will submit this alignment to the DOT. But we did obtain his signature on the application form, because the DOT requires both this applicant and the shared driveway with the neighbor to both be co-applicants for the application. And we'll go in as a shared driveway to the DOT. But they would not allow him to maintain his existing driveway, so we're putting...the DOT is requiring concrete curbing across the entire frontage, and we're closing up his driveway opening as it is today, and putting one depressed curb for this new opening, for the new driveway. We've also moved the driveway...the original plan had the driveway closer to the middle of the property. We pushed it as far as we could to the west. If you visit the site, you'll notice that this is a single lane in each direction, Route 33, and as soon as you get to the end of the property, there's a center painted yellow median that starts to develop, and it's right at the end of this curb return that we're proposing. And we can't put the driveway within that painted area, but as soon as that paint stops, that's the first available space we can begin our entrance to our site. So we pushed the driveway on our property as far to the west as we could, which is right where that paint stops. So we're as far west and far away from the activity which happens down here at the cabin. And that was done. And like I said, the owner consented to that alignment of the new driveway. So what that meant was, the farmland buffer that we proposed, based on the chairman's recommendation, was 50 feet plus the 10-foot easement that's there. So we're really 60 feet from the farm, and that comes down along the west side of our property, and then arcs back around to meet the sideline. So the old driveway that had been in the farmland buffer is still in it, but it's been relocated to a new alignment to get him connected into our driveway. And then we're taking out the driveway and putting planting...that colored rendering you can see, there's planting in this triangular piece, which now will be between the driveway and the property line, will be planted with evergreen trees and shade trees to buffer that angle of the farm.
Did you meet with Sherry on the planting?
I did not meet with Sherry, no.
Okay.
And if there's...there is about 50 more trees than the last plan. We added about 50 more evergreen trees, and we filled in the area that was...we have a double row, almost a triple row in this one section.
Right.
And with regard to the rear of the property, the parking lot is more than 100 feet from the property line. So one of the four criteria that needs to be met for the primitive buffer is a parking setback of more than 100 feet, and this is more than 100 feet to the parking lot. And then the landscaping, I believe, is then sufficient between the property line and the improvements. We have two or three rows of trees in that area. But again, if Sherry needs more or different locations, we're glad to relocate or change species or change sizes as she sees fit.
Sherry?
Yeah. In my review, I did ask for some of the species to be switched. Because the wall and the evergreens are so close together, we really can't put, you know, large spruce trees on top of that wall. So, you know, they could switch that row to a more narrow, upright type of evergreen, and then have the larger spruce trees further back. And I also commented, I just wanted a little more variety on the deciduous trees, as well as the shrubs along the building. They only have one kind of shrub along the front of the building.
We'd be glad to make that change.
I believe those are comments H, I, J, and K in CME's review letter of June 12, and we will comply with those requests.
Great. Thank you.
Getting back to the site layout, so as we enter the site with the 30-foot driveway, we enter into a parking lot which has 32 parking spaces, and there is a dumpster area which is fenced in with room for the two trash dumpsters and recycling bins. And I noticed that we received a letter from the Recycling Commission or Recycling Director that the plan is acceptable to them.
Okay. What about medical pickups for medical waste?
I believe the...at the original application portion, it was testified to that any of that would be handled by a private contractor who would go into the building and retrieve it in a proper enclosure in the building and then take it out.
Okay, it would be inside, not outside?
Yes, there won't be any outside medical waste disposal.
Okay. Because I know a lot of lab...you know, labs, they leave it out by the front door or stuff, and...
Yeah.
You know, they pick it up after hours. There won't be any of that then.
Right, and this is more of a, if you recall the testimony, more of a treatment facility for memory care, as opposed to medical procedures. So there'll be very limited quantities of any of that.
Okay.
They're going to have a visiting nurse or a doctor once in a while to come in and just, you know, maybe check eyesight or ears or general questions, but it's not a medical facility where they're doing procedures.
Well, I just want blood tests, you know, stuff like that.
Right.
Going to the labs.
But if there's anything, it'll be kept inside the building.
Inside.
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we talk about the enclosure for a minute?
Yes.
So you're proposing fencing. We typically like to see masonry enclosure around dumpster and recycling, and there's also a requirement in our ordinance that it be landscaped, and there's no landscaping anywhere near where that enclosure is going.
Just a tree.
Right, so, we're proposing a concrete slab with steel bollards around the inside of the fence, but we felt that a fence is more decorative than the masonry enclosure.
I would respectfully disagree. The fence gets beat up, and then it's broken, and then it looks not aesthetically pleasing, and we typically require a masonry enclosure.
Split-faced block.
Yeah.
Do you have a problem?
Split-faced block is the right...decorative.
We can make it a block enclosure, very simply, and we'll also add landscaping behind it, but with all the evergreen trees around it, I don't know who the landscape's going to benefit. I have no problem putting landscaping around it, but it's going to be, you know, facing the open part of...
Well, I mean, our ordinance requires it. I would recommend that you put in landscaping per ordinance requirement.
That's fine.
And I would request that you coordinate with Sherry, as opposed to...
Yes.
What landscaping goes there.
Okay. And we'll do that.
Okay.
So the parking lot then has 32 spaces, and we have a small island in the center, and we have a sidewalk path that brings the people who park on the west side of the site through the island to a crosswalk to the front door. At the front door, there's a covered porch and a concrete slab under the porch, like a sidewalk.
Now, will the parking lot be striped for, you know, hatch stripes for the crosswalk?
Yes, the parking lot is striped with hatch crosswalk from the...
That will be striped?
Yes, it'll be striped as a painted crosswalk.
Okay. Now, it looks like that's about the same width as a parking stall. That's not going to...there's no parking right in front of the door, right?
No, and what that is, it's the same alignment as the access for the handicap parking, so they're one and the same. The crosswalk aligns with the handicap parking...
Okay.
...access between the two handicap spaces.
Okay.
There's no sidewalk to the rear of the property. There is a small porch enclosure on the north side of the building, and that has a fenced area which restricts the residents to be outside, but not to be able to wander onto the property.
Now, will there be a locked gate there to the outside of that fence?
If you recall the testimony last time, there was a lockdown...it's a lockdown facility, so they can't get out.
No, but will there be a gate provided with either a key...in case of a fire, and they have to get access into that back door?
I think we spoke about, if I'm not mistaken, we spoke about a card access that they could swipe and open up the gate.
Okay, but there will be a gate there then?
It won't be like a chain with a bolt on it.
Right.
It'll be easily opened...
Okay.
...in case of an emergency. As well as all the exterior doors, they're only accessed with a code.
Okay.
You just can't open the door and walk in or out of this building. You have to be buzzed in and buzzed out. It's basically like Todd said, a lockdown facility. We talked about parking of 32 cars, and the amount of employees on the site leaves about 20 cars available for the day-to-day other people who might come. The question came up in one of the review letters about, well, how about holidays or parties? And the testimony during the original application was that there would be scheduled times for perhaps Room 1 through 6, you come between 9 and 10, and Room 6 to...and different times so that they don't have a mass parking arrival time, and that it will be scheduled so that they can spread out the need for parking over the day's events, so that they wouldn't have...it's all arranged, you know, time-wise, so that there's not a problem with parking. And I think there's sufficient parking. I think the applicant testified on many of his other sites, and he has more than 100 throughout the country. He had 15 spaces was a number they shoot for, and now we have 32. So from his operational point of view, he's very comfortable with the number, and from our review, I think that there's sufficient parking for this use. These residents that are in this building do not drive. They're dropped off and picked up, and this is not like you would think assisted living where you have some freedom to come and go. Once you're in this building, you don't leave until someone picks you up, and some people stay here for the rest of their life. So, I mean, it's that kind of a location.
Mr. DiFolco?
Yes.
To that end, shouldn't there be like a drop-off area?
To that end, shouldn't there be like a drop-off area by the front door? So, I mean, because right now, the way it looks is that, you know, these individuals would be dropped off in the drive aisle and have to walk through a parking lot, like through parking spaces to get into the building. There's no like dedicated drop-off area?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can put a couple of signs in front, there's a lot of extra spots here and we could have maybe two spaces that say, you know, thirty-minute parking only and so that somebody who is coming and does get dropped off, they will be escorted in, there'll be time required to get in, to get settled in so that a few spots might be open, but I don't, I mean, once the people are in there, there's not much in and out. Once the beds fill up, it's filled and nobody's really using that spot, but we could designate sign for maybe two spaces on either side of the front door as drop-off only. This way, that can be available for anybody who is coming in, there'll be an open spot for them to come.
But, Mr. Chair?
And again, that'll be scheduled so that they don't just randomly show up.
Wait, you're telling me that if I wanna go see my mom in this facility, I have to make an appointment?
No, I'm saying that if you wanna drop somebody off, they will know when they're coming and they'll schedule the arrivals so that those spots for the arriving patients can be left open and if they have one arrival at nine in the morning and one at eleven, they'll know that there's multiple times that they can arrive at the spot.
But what if, but what if I wanted to take my mom out? I don't need an appointment to take my mom out for the day, right? So, I, I am just concerned that you're talking about these individuals that have to be on lockdown and they're, they're not, you know, able to do what we would typically see, but yet we've made no provision to get them into and out of the building other than going through parked cars. So, I am concerned, you know, and to that end, what about an ambulance? Like, what happens if there's an emergency? These are elderly patients, correct? So, how would an ambulance get in? You know, especially if they need to bring in a stretcher? So, and what happens if those two cars parked in those drop-off parking spaces while something happens? It's a concern for me that there's no easy way of ingress and egress of the individuals that are gonna be staying in the facility.
If there's an ambulance, they can park in front of the handicap at the crosswalk. There's an eight-foot wide, unparked, direct in front of the front door, that they can do that. But as far as the picking up your mom and taking her out, we can designate additional spaces, so there's four or five spaces that are just for the drop and pickoff. We can put as many spots as you want.
Where are the handicap spaces? Because the plan I have, I don't see any.
The handicap spots are on both sides of the crosswalk.
I mean, these are the plans I have.
If you look on three of nine, sheet three of nine?
I have, I have, I start that word.
Three of nine.
Four is the grading plan, three is the site plan.
So, this is really not making any sense here. Because you have this connecting walk from the island to the building, so when a car pulls up, they're going to be to the left of the two handicapped spots and the two handicapped spots is one on each side of the walk. Is that correct?
The walk is in front of all the spots. There's an entire sidewalk between the building and the parking lot which is behind the curb. So, there's a curbing and a sidewalk.
Curb and sidewalk.
There's an...
And then, and then what's the width of that sidewalk to the parking lot from the building? I don't see a width there.
There's a, there's a six-foot sidewalk parallel to the building which is touching the curb, so the combination is curb and sidewalk. So, you park the car, there's a curb and then there's a sidewalk immediately behind the curbing and then there's a porch in front of the building and you can walk under the porch into the front door. There's a continual...
So, if an ambulance, so if a car comes in or an ambulance has to come in, they come in? Or for thirty-three, drive around the parking lot and then loop around to get to the front of the building?
No. If the ambulance comes in, it comes in like this and stops right here and the front door is right here. Front door is in line with the crosswalk.
So, that's the concern is there's two handicap park, what happens if there's two cars there parked?
Right, but they don't park in the stripe. There's a striped-out zone between it.
Yeah, I understand that, but if there's two cars, two handicaps spots and there's two cars in there and now there's an ambulance, is that gonna be enough room for an ambulance or any type of emergency if there are two handicap, if both handicapped spots are taken?
Yes.
How wide is that hatched area?
Eight feet.
Eight foot.
You got eight feet between the handicaps.
There's plenty of room for a stretcher and a crew to walk through. Eight feet is pretty wide.
Is that good, Jennifer?
I mean, I think it's all right.
Okay.
I would prefer to see maybe less parking spaces and an area that they could pull up immediately adjacent to the building. I mean, that would be my preference, but I would defer to the applicant and of course board.
What's the parking reg, how many parking spots are they required?
We don't have, we don't have parking standards for this type of use in our ordinance. And so, the testimony that was provided with the use clearance application was that they typically need like one per employee plus fifteen spots.
Right.
So, I think that they, you know, they have thirty-two spots on this plan. I think that they could probably get away with less parking. You know, I understand that you wanna make sure that there, there's availability of parking if people wanna go visit, but the unfortunate circumstance is that it's not frequent that you're gonna see all these spots full and in a, in a unique circumstance where there's an event, you could always accommodate in some fashion. But I think when you're dealing with this demographic of the population, that probably less parking spaces would be better and having like a designated area in the front for either patient drop-off or, or an ambulance.
Well, Jennifer, if you take away one of the handicap, move it, move it over and then just use that area of the one that you're moving, don't even have a parking spot.
Well, you could take out two parking spaces.
That's what I'm saying, take out.
Actually, you could take the two beyond the, beyond the handicap towards the refuse area.
Right.
Make those last two out, make that a drop-off area. Also be an area where somebody could do deliveries and just, just, you know, cross hatch it, stripe it.
But you have the, you have the walkway, could you just move the handicap?
That's what I'm saying, move the handicap.
Oh, you could do that too, sure.
Move one handicap to the left, one to the right.
Sure.
And now, those two original handicapped spots are just making it a little wider.
Right, just widen that front entrance area out and then just hatch the whole area and you know that if an ambulance needs to get in there, he could just back up right there.
Correct.
Done.
I'll work with Jack on the alignment and painting and the striping and signage.
You okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Board members, you all okay with that?
They're gonna take out those two and move them?
Well, they, let them work with Jack and they'll, they'll...
We, we may wind up losing two spaces, so we'll have thirty available, but then there'll be room for the drop-offs of the ambulance, so effectively, you know, it'll be very similar, but more convenient for the people that use the site.
Is that good with you, Jennifer?
Yes.
Good. Okay, I'm gonna bring up a kind of, I know Mr. Donald's not here, but did you all approach your DOT about M-grass and E-grass lines?
We did, we did. And the DOT, Mr. Raj Patel, he's in charge of issuing the permits for this part of Howell Route Thirty-three. He told me that there are no plans for widening the road or for a left turn, center, island improvements on this section of Thirty-three. He did go on to tell me that the, the driveway application will have to be, you know, shared as I previously mentioned. It'll be a minor access permit and that the, the use that we're proposing for this application is one of the lowest traffic generators that's on the chart, that there's nothing much less intense than an assisted living for thirty beds. It's less than an office, it's less than a drive-up restaurant or a bank or any other commercial use. Doesn't have truck traffic, it's a very low-intense use and at the time that they review it, because this state highway has a certain designation that prohibits high-intensity left turn into the site from Thirty-three, but each case is reviewed based on the use that's proposed and the traffic that's generated by the use. And if they feel that the use does not create a, a need for the prohibition of left turn, the state will typically grant the waiver for the specific low-intensity use to be allowed to make a left turn in. So, that's, that's where this is sitting right now. There's no improvements proposed. I also mentioned to him the fact that across the street is the high-intensity use, the restaurant, the cabin. And he said, although that's there, this application would not be influenced by that traffic movement, that they're aware of it, but they look at this independently with its low-intensity use and that they would consider granting the waiver because of the low-intensity use. But again, if in fact they said no to the waiver, then it would be the proper signage that would say no left turn and do not enter from the westerly direction.
Yeah, but you, you're gonna have people making that turn anyway.
I understand that and it's a practical matter. I mean, there's lots of driveways along this road today. None of them are pretty much restricted. It's pretty much, you can make a left anywhere on Thirty-three that I'm aware of, on that section of the road, you can pull in left, you can go this driveway, the next one, the fire station, the one after that, you can make lefts up and down the highway.
Well, anybody can make a left anywhere they want.
I mean, a legal left.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It means, you know, you come down to being legal or non-legal.
Right, but the fact that we moved the driveway as far to the west as we could legally away from, I think we're more than two hundred feet from the cabin's driveway now, so we're, we're not right opposite, we're pretty far away.
My, my next question would be, if DOT grants a waiver, will they remove a section of the double line, double yellow line there so you can make a legal left?
No, they start right at the... The line doesn't prohibit you to make a left turn, it just means you can't pass.
Yeah, but if, I, I tell you, I have seen this and insurance companies will not pay. If you make a left-hand turn across a double yellow line and you create an accident, guess what? The insurance company is not paying for it.
I don't know about that.
Because you made an illegal, if there is a break in those double yellow lines, then it's legal to make that left-hand turn, but as long as there's a double yellow line, the insurance company's not gonna pay for it.
Well, to the extent that we can pursue that with the DOT...
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
I know for a street intersection, that's true. For a driveway, I'm not so sure that that continues to be the thought process. I know for a street intersection, they break the yellow. Driveways, I'm not so sure, because there's many driveways, that would be a broken line pretty much every hundred feet, you have a broken line, so I think it's corners and traffic signals and stop...
Businesses, businesses. That's why they had to do that excavation company right there. You know how they made their driveway come way out?
I'm aware of that, yes.
And come back around? That was the reason being.
Yeah.
But, Mr. DeFalco?
Yes.
Yes.
You also had comments with Mr. Patel about the drainage?
I did, yes.
And, and the discharge and, and second of all, you, you do show the, the DTS, which is the typical section that the DOT says and they want structures within that typical section.
Correct. Fifty-one feet from the center of the road, the DTS or the desired typical section is indicated on the site plan. That's the dash line that runs parallel to the road, but it's fifty-one feet from the center line. So, that's the proposed future right-of-way that the DOT has contemplated for any future road improvements and they would not like to have structures within that zone. So, we pulled back our Stonewater Basin and all of our improvements are basically behind that fifty-one feet to the north of it.
And your discharge then, when you discharge from your basin, which basically is an overflow basin, that discharge is onto DOT property, correct? And that would be part of the drainage, because you'll have to get a drainage permit and access from DOT and they will, they will review that. I know you and I spoke, that you had a conversation with him?
Yes.
And he understood that that discharges over that property?
Right, because he's aware that, he called it, this road is designed as an umbrella section which has high point in the crown of the road and it's shaped like an umbrella so that the low point is the gutter line. And since there's no curb along this road now, that low point continues off the right-of-way basically onto our property and the flow is on our property and then it flows to the west. The DOT owns the lot immediately adjacent to us on the west.
It's about eighty-five feet from...
Lot twenty-point-oh-two is owned by the DOT. That's, that's the lot line right maybe a third of the way up our property line. So, this parcel here is owned by DOT and that continues for about a thousand feet. About a thousand feet away is a tributary stream which crosses under the state highway Thirty-three. So, right now, the drainage flows down Route Thirty-three to the west, goes off the road into the low area of this former farm field which is now DOT right-of-way property and it flows very flat slope, it flows into a wooded area and then into the stream. And the proposed drainage outfall is following that same pattern, it'll flow to the off-gutter area, again through the DOT right-of-way, very flat slope and wind up in the same stream. So, the DOT, when they, when they told us we had to put curbing along here, he was aware that the drainage would continue and that the state highway drainage would continue to the end of the curb. There's a series of guardrail along the edge of the pavement here and the drainage flows off the pavement through the guardrail opening, back into that same former farm field again and back to the stream. So, the drainage will be consistent with what's there today and the rate of runoff, Jack will go through that later perhaps, but the rates of runoff have been reduced so our peak flows at this common point have been reduced so that we won't have any erosion at that property line where the discharge of our basin is. But that was also discussed with the DOT engineer.
Any approval this board would give you would be subject to their approval.
Yes, it would have to be, yes.
Also, Mr. DeFalco, inlet number five, you've got a riprap or stone riprap section there. Now, that, that is not emptying into your basin, correct?
Okay, number five, let me get to that sheet. So, inlet number five is located near the easterly property line. And part of what we're doing on this easterly property line is presently, the neighbor has encroached upon a moon-shaped piece of property, maybe two hundred feet long and ten or fifteen feet wide and, and has encroached onto our land. So, we're gonna remove that encroachment and vegetate it, but as this property drains down, there's a little bit of a low point right at the eastern property line. And rather than take the off-site water through our basin, we've developed a swale system and an inlet to collect the water. So, any water that enters the site hits this swale, runs either north or south as the case may be and is collected by an E-flat grate inlet and then piped out to a manhole and piped to the head wall which is the discharge point near the westerly line. So, it bypasses the Stonewater Basin. All of the onsite water, the roof of the building, the parking lot and the part of the driveway does go directly into the basin, but this off-site water and that inlet five with the riprap, that is collecting off-site water and a small portion of the rear yard and that small low spot that's on our property and pipes that away from the basin and now to the discharge point.
What about sediment? Jack, do you, you know, sediment coming off of that off-site property? You know, because that's a construction yard, right?
Yeah, well, they have to have, right, they, they would have to, that, that flows by gravity up to the point to the bubble of basin. It, but doesn't go through the basin itself.
No, I understand that, but it's flowing through gravity, you've got all of the earth between...
Well, he's got, he's got...
Well, he's got a riprap area around the inlet to help control it. He's gonna have to, until he gets done with his restoration, he's gonna have to protect that inlet to keep the sediment out of it.
No, I know there, I understand during construction, they're gonna have to protect that.
Right.
But that's not catching their water. That's catching a little bit from the backyard. It's coming from the neighbor property.
That's correct, because he's got a low point there.
I understand. So that neighbor's property is a construction yard.
Okay.
Okay, you're, right now, as the water runs off, it's sheeting across the top of the ground, which will filter it. Now you're putting it straight into a basin right out of pipe.
Doesn't go, it goes, right, it goes into the inlet, and then it's piped around.
I know, that's what I'm saying, but there's no filtration for the sediment that's coming off a construction.
There is a grass strip before the inlet. The inlet is not on the property line.
No, I know, it's all for the...
There is a vegetated area between the inlet and the property line.
Okay.
And if need be, we can slide that inlet slightly to the west to provide a little bit more of a filtered area, if that's a...
See, that's my concern, because it's a construction yard.
Yeah.
They got backhoes, dozer, whatever they got in there, and it's all drained straight out. Now it's got an area, you know, a pretty long area to filter it out.
Yeah, we have enough room to move that catch basin a good five or 10 feet along the alignment of the pipe, Jack, do you see that? We can move it towards the basin, but not in the basin. And we could have increased filter of maybe another 10 feet of grass before the actual structure, so that any sediment could be settled out before it reaches the pipe.
Okay. But, you know, that's what I would be concerned about. You have a problem with that, Jack?
No, we can do that.
Would that work?
We'll put a grass, a heavy grassed area for filtration.
Would that work?
As long as the grass stays there, yes. I mean, the other thing to do, but it's a maintenance thing, is trying to put a filter fence up there and leave it there, but that's temporary, not gonna work permanently.
What size pipe is that? I don't see it.
18 inch.
Oh, yeah, I see, it's 18 inch.
If he has concerns about that, could you, instead of putting a channel in that basin, make it say, say it's three and a half from the grate to the invert out, make it five and a half to the bottom?
Oh, yeah. Put a catch basin in instead of an inlet.
And then they'd be able to like pump it out every once in a while?
Sure.
Yeah, so we can catch about two feet of, we can catch some of this sediment right there.
I think the grass will clean it, but it's a construction company next door, and who knows if they got, I don't know if they got...
They got some backhoes and everything else.
Okay.
What we could also do is to raise the grate and have it hold about six inches of water. The entire swell can fill up, settle out, and then perk to the ground, so that it's not directly flowing into the inlet without first settling out. We could do that also.
I'd worry about mosquitoes with that, but you're the boss.
No, that's the boss over there. Did you hear that, Jack?
I did not, I was...
If we raised the grate about six inches, it'll allow the water to not flow directly in, and that would then perk into the ground, or else we can just do...
I'd just do a catch basin.
Do the catch basin instead.
Maybe two, three years, you have to pump it out or whatever.
I don't know if you can raise it six inches, but you can raise, you gotta leave it a little bit high.
Or we could put the sump in, about a two-foot sump, and then clean it out every year, whenever it's needed. That's a simpler solution, I think.
Good idea. Okay, anything else on the drainage, Jack?
No, just, he actually did a nice job on it, I will compliment, as much as I beat him up last time. He actually did a nice job this time. And he still, and he also complies with all the requirements of the reductions, the infiltration, and the flows.
Now, all of the roof drains would be going into the catch basin, right, correct?
Into the storm pond, the pond, yes.
Okay.
Yep. And that's all the roof runoff and the driveway?
And the sidewalks.
Right.
Yep. All the impervious goes into the storm retention pond.
Right. There's a small piece of driveway, that's all that doesn't go in there.
Correct, a small piece of driveway.
Keep in memory that he's filling the back of the slot almost three feet, three and a half feet.
Right.
But he runs all the water. Based upon the preliminary, the basin will infiltrate into the ground, but I always ask for onsite testing before to make sure it works. And I talked to Mr. DeFalco, and he said he has no problem with providing that.
Okay.
I don't like lab tests or just taking off the maps, you gotta, in the field.
Now, the emergency spillway, that's on your, that's gonna be just a grass?
It's just a grass spot. It's where the berm basically is taken away, so that if the water ever gets to that level, rather than going over top of the berm, it just flows through that little opening and out to the right-of-way of the street.
It won't, it won't impede the street?
No.
Okay, you got enough slope there?
Yes.
I don't see it basically overtopping that grass well, because it could also go over the top of our weir and go through the pipe. So it'll find the downstream, pipe is large enough to handle it, but if it ever does get that high, it would come out to the street without overtopping the berm.
Rich, it's designed, what, 9.2 inches in 24 hours, I believe?
Yeah, I believe so, 9.2 inches.
Because a couple of weeks ago, I saw that it was one lake out there.
Well...
One big lake.
That's what the regs, both soils, the state, and how law require that comply with that, that's what the reg says.
We also show on this site plan a very low landscape wall along the west edge of the parking lot, and that just is so that we do not grade within the farmland buffer. So we have to put a three-foot-high masonry wall between the parking lot and the farmland buffer area.
Excuse me, Rich, you're saying if that pond overflows and it comes out this little spillway, it's not gonna go on 33?
Oh, it will.
Oh, I was gonna say, that's what I see.
Right, if it goes through that little grassy spillway. But I'm saying that it'll go over our outlet control structure, and it'll go out that way before it reaches, I believe that the outlet control structure has the capacity to take all the flow beyond the 100-year storm. We have a two-foot rectangular weir at that height, so if we get any more flow, it'll go out the outlet control structure, go right out before it gets to that spillway.
Well, see, now, you're gonna have a curb there, so it's not gonna come over the curb, correct?
Correct, there's a curb around the entire parking lot.
Right. Well, even on 33, you've got an entire length curb, right?
It's all curved, from end to end.
Right.
But it's higher, so it'll flow down to the curb.
Also, Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I know we kind of talk whether we want to fence the basin or not. A lot of times we don't, but given the nature of these patients, I don't know, although we do have a pretty close restriction on them coming out.
If you do, I wouldn't do the entire basin, you might do right around by the parking lot, you know.
And use our typical, the split rail with the wire?
With the wire mesh, nail to the split rail fence.
Yeah, just a portion from the corner of the building around. I wouldn't do the whole basin.
This section in here, adjacent to the building.
Yeah.
Okay.
What about the board?
No, I agree, it'd be an overkill if you did the whole thing.
Yeah.
Previously, they had an emergency generator, but we don't see it on the plan. Will there be one?
Yes, it will be, and that was inadvertently left off. Yeah, there will be a generator. I believe the generator would be centrally located behind the indent of the back of the building, so that it's as far from the residence, which is situated to the north, as far from the residence as possible, and behind the building as a buffer.
And it'll comply with whatever setbacks you need.
I believe that's an accessory structure, which is, I think in this zone, it's maybe only the height of the structure. It's like, it's only a three or four foot high, or...
Probably a minimum of 10 feet or something.
Well, the building is 25 feet to the sideline, I think we can comply with that.
Is that okay, Jack?
We could also locate it in this little indent also, which is...
Yeah, but now you're close to the residence.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if it might be best to put it in the area by the refuse. I mean, it's an emergency generator, I take it it would be exercised during the day?
Yep, I think that's a good idea. And what we could do is make the refuge enclosure even larger to enclose the generator, so that it's inside the concrete for even more sound protection.
They usually go on once a week automatically for like 20 minutes. You can pick when you want, most people do it like 3:40 afternoon, so it doesn't bother anybody.
But we can do that as well, so we can have a sound buffer to the residence by extending that concrete wall behind it.
Is that okay? My next question, air conditioning, is that all rooftop?
No, that's on the ground.
Air conditioning?
Yeah, the actual condensing unit is on the ground.
Okay, so where are they gonna be placed?
They were proposed to be on the east side of the building, which backs up to the firehouse lot and that commercial lot.
Approximately how many units?
I believe there are a minimum of eight units, four and four for each side of the building.
And you're gonna pipe them, you're not gonna split them? You know, four on one side, four on the other?
I think they were all intended to be on the one side of the building, not in the front, but all to the rear. I'm calling it the rear, the east side. All the condensing units were on the east side of the building, and duct work over to internally, but nothing is proposed on the west side of the building.
Okay. Now, that'll conform to the setbacks?
I believe the air conditioning units will conform to the setbacks, yes.
Now, the heat, is that gonna be gas, oil, or do you know?
I do not, I do not know the type of heat. I doubt it would be oil, it would probably...
Probably gas.
Probably gas heat.
Okay. There's gonna be sprinklers?
Yes, there will be sprinklers in the building. I know that was a concern of the fire review.
Right.
The fire said they have no objections so long as we sprinkle the building, and we are proposing to do that.
So, Jack, you okay with the air conditioning?
Well, I just wanna see where it's at. We're looking at the architectials, but the architectials don't show the air conditioning units. If that's the ones that we have, the updated...
There are no air conditioning units shown on the architectials that I'm aware of, but the discussion was made that they would be on the east side of the building.
In fact, the architectials we have, I don't think are for the new building, because it doesn't show the indentation at the rear of the building.
The architectural that I have, and again, I did not do the architectural, I did not submit the architectural, so this is only my copy of it. It does show the indent for the porch on the north side of the building. This is the entrance way on the west side, this is the...
What's the date on it?
3/2/2017, March 2nd.
But it's, we don't have the same...
It's labeled AA 111.
We have it, we have it March 2nd. But it's different from what you have.
Well, the one we have shows the sitting room at the back, right?
Yep, and the same date.
And the same date. What you said was there was an indentation in the back.
Which I can see on that plane.
Right, so what the architect did was, the first building was a straight shot from end to end. He indented the building in and out, and moved the porch to the north side. And similarly in the front, he brought the building in and out. That was a change, and again, it didn't come from my office, I didn't know if you have seen this or not.
Is there no revision date on that?
The only date is the same date that's on the set that you have, it's dated March 2nd. No revisions date or, it's not revised date at all, just one date.
But the building, the building is how big, Rich?
The building is 234 feet, eight and a half inches, end to end, which includes the sitting room, which is a 16-foot at the, where the porches...
All right, without the sitting room, what is it?
Without the sitting room, it's... Maybe 219, approximately.
My question, how far back did you set the building, move the building back to the property line from the original drawing?
Right now, it's 113 feet from the right-of-way of State Highway 33.
No, the, joining Lot 24, you moved the building towards Lot 24, didn't you, whenever you moved the sitting area?
Let's step back off that lot line.
Yes, we moved this part of the building closer to the firehouse lot.
Right, because to the sitting room, to the sitting area, it was 30 feet from the property line.
Right, now we're 25, six inches from the building.
Now you're 25, six from the building.
From the side, from the back property line, or side property line, as you want to call it.
There should be an adequate room for air conditioning units, right?
Yes, I agree.
Can you put those...
And he's got the little cutout, which is probably about 5 feet.
Right. Can you put those in the center?
There might be two-foot offsets, maybe to do...
Yeah, right there, that way...
Maybe a two, I think it's probably a three-foot offset, because that's what's required in our...
It is, it is three-foot offset, yeah.
Could you put that in that indentation, put those units?
Sure.
Instead of either end?
I think the, I mean, the architect is gonna have to basically work with the building department to put these where they are properly located. We can suggest that they center them, they may need some more toward the end to get proper distribution. I'm not really 100% sure on the air conditioning HVAC design, I'm not part of that process.
Okay.
But we can recommend that they be centered as close to the middle of the building as possible.
Okay, well, the reason being is noise factor. Well, the reason being is noise factor. Is there any questions from the board at this point?
Where the, we're proposing that intention area, is there any rooms there that they're gonna be, where the windows are gonna be by patients?
You're gonna have them anywhere, I feel, 'cause you're gonna, the whole back...
It's gonna be...
There's rooms on the entire back wall.
The entire wall has rooms, two, six, 10, 14, 16 rooms along the back wall, straight through.
Yeah, I mean, it's unfortunate.
It's gonna be there anyway.
Okay.
But it's locked down, so very, I would say, probably not gonna open the windows anyway.
I don't believe they're gonna open windows, no.
I just have questions on the gravel driveway. Who's gonna be putting that in and who's gonna maintain that driveway?
Okay, so the applicant is going to construct that new gravel driveway for the neighbor, and once it's built, the neighbor's gonna maintain his driveway as if it was where it is today. So we'll install it, we'll remove the old one, but once it's put in, it's gonna be his driveway, basically.
Now, can I, can I request something, though? At least 10 feet be paved on a driveway, instead of bringing gravel straight out to your driveway?
Like an apron by our...
Have an apron?
Yes, we can do a 10-foot apron.
The reason I'm saying, because now you're gonna be tracking...
Tracking rocks onto our driveway.
On your driveway.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would also suggest that they post a private drive sign.
Okay.
So that your customers don't drive in there, just like...
That could be our overflow parking, Jack.
Excuse me?
That could be our overflow parking.
Okay. That's the other thing I'm afraid of, that might be where they would park.
I know, but 10-foot paved apron is okay, with paved 10-foot apron.
There's gonna be a written agreement?
Yes, a written agreement, and there'll probably be a written easement as well, and a vacation of the old easement, because it's not accurate. Once this goes through, the 10-foot easement will have to be modified. I'm sure there'll be a new driveway easement, which follows the path of the driveway and then turns and follows this alignment, and also includes the rights to cross the driveway here. So there will be new legal documents prepared for ingress and egress across this lot to benefit Lot 21.
Mr. Cohen, could, do you have an objection, providing that for the record as part of this file?
I have only been retained to represent my client in the approvals aspect. I have, you guys, another attorney that represents him in the acquisition. I don't think it'll be a problem when it's eventually done to provide it to you, but it's not created at this moment.
Can we find out about that? Because I would like it to be part...
I don't believe it exists. I know it doesn't exist right now.
Just make it a condition of approval, that's all.
Because we have to get that approved by DOT, you know?
No, I understand that, but...
I have no problem providing you a copy of it, once it exists, absolutely.
Yeah, I would like it to be...
But it's not gonna exist like the next couple of weeks, I don't think.
Right, well...
Make it a condition of approval.
Okay, okay. Well, the reason being, I know we've had a couple of cases with shared driveways, and I don't want this to come back. I know. I know you know which ones I'm talking about, Jack.
We'll definitely provide that.
Okay, Mr. Mallon, wanna go through your letter? Really, I don't think we've covered most of it.
Yeah, he's covered pretty much everything.
Is there anything else?
We talked about no sidewalk on 33, we talked about developing in the buffer. We talked about the downstream drainage, that's gonna be subject to DOT. They've covered everything. The only other thing, and Jen had it, I think, talking about pesticides and what it is. I didn't raise the issue because I didn't have it as a farm or anything. I had it basically as residential with two dwelling units. But I don't know, you probably know better whether it was ever farmed.
What's that?
Was this property ever farmed?
Yes, it was.
It was, so was it orchards or...
Oh, no, this was a motel.
Okay.
You know, it's been a motel for 60 years, I think.
Right, usually orchards is when we usually get the pesticide testing. You don't usually get it, usually it's orchards that have it, because they spray.
Yeah, I don't think this property was ever used as a farm.
I always included it because there was some identification in the previous submittal that identified it as a historic farm, that's all.
Right, now, they will need a variance for their drive access.
That's correct.
Because it crosses into the farm land.
Yes.
That is correct.
From their buffer requirements.
Right.
Yes.
I have the buffer and the sidewalk along Route 33, and the sidewalk from the site out to Route 33.
I thought you got that in the, I identified the sidewalk as something that was approved prior with the use variance application.
It's obviously subject to the DOT approving that, so we did get the waiver.
And I also had the driveway in the buffer as a variance that was granted with the use variance application. I just have a couple things, Mr. Chairman, because they hit pretty much everything in my letter, if you're done, Jack?
But Jennifer, I just heard your statement, but they moved...
Right, so we should...
The buffer to where it didn't require the, it wasn't gonna require the variance for the farm land, because they moved the buffer.
Well, but that driveway was always in the buffer regardless. They moved the structures, they moved the structures, they, yes. So the location, the location of the driveway in the buffer, Todd, has moved pursuant to your conversations with the neighbor. So I would just reaffirm that relief with this application, with the revised location. We would take no exception to the granting of the variance, because number one, we had granted it with the use variance previously. This realignment is simply to accommodate the neighbor's vehicle, so I would take no exception to be granted again.
It eliminates an extra access on 33.
Correct.
Right, no, I understand it, but I'm trying to clear the record.
I think he's just trying to make sure it's clean for you.
Everything's covered there.
So, Todd, I just have a couple things. There's wetlands on this property that I see identified on the plans, and the corner of the building goes into that. Is that gonna be just a straight fill permit, or is there averaging, or what is happening?
Okay, so what's proposed is a GP 6, general permit number 6, filling of isolated wetlands, the non-tributary wetlands, the not waters of the USA, and it's 0.11 acres of fill, and it should be a straight fill with, end result being no wetland and no buffer remaining.
Okay, that's fine, I agree that that, you know, it's an isolated wetland, and they are eligible for, to fill a portion of it up to a certain amount. I think it's a quarter acre under that permit that would not require averaging or anything of that nature.
I agree, yeah.
Have you already got that permit?
No, we don't.
Okay, so it's based on receiving the permit?
Right, I mean, that would be like an outside agency approval.
Okay.
Rich, the dimensions of the sign, you have kind of a wider base at the bottom that was not included in the dimensions on your detail sheet. We would just request that you revise the dimensions to include, you basically take like the top of the monument area, and you carry that straight down, but there's a kind of a platform on the bottom that's not included, that needs to be included.
Okay, that's intended to be the ground level, I believe, Jen.
Is it below grade?
That's, the dimension three feet is to the bottom of the actual sign, which is above ground. That larger piece is a footing that you wouldn't really see be buried.
It's gonna be below grade?
That larger piece below it, yes, that's below grade.
And then, can you just dimension on your plans, the setback for the sign, because it's just not dimensioned, that's all?
Yes, definitely, but it is behind, it's more than 20 feet.
Yeah, I saw that it was behind that line. And then the only other thing is, under our item number six, which is just some plan revisions, is there any of those items that would become a problem for you?
Well, under A, we're going to modify that handicap parking with Jack's office.
Right.
You already said H to L would be fine.
Right, so I'm just, you know, there's just some plan changes. You know, we're gonna revise the parking schedule too, because now it's gonna be 30 parking spaces instead of 32.
No, we have no problem with those comments.
Okay, so then I would have nothing else.
Okay, Sheri?
Yeah, I don't have anything, as long as, you know, they'll make the changes that I have listed in there, I'm fine with it.
That was under that item six we just talked about, so...
No, I know.
And just in case you're wondering, I did ask for calculations to be put on the plans, but they are replanting what, all their requirements, so they don't have to pay for their tree removal.
Any questions of the board, or comments from the board? Based on what Sheri said, you will be toning down that left side, because that was the only thing I was concerned about. It seemed like it was an overkill with the, you know, the conifers and the trees. So that area on the west side of the...
Yes, I worked with Sheri to come up with a plan that's...
And you'll put more varieties, because I agree too, that it's almost in the front of the building.
We only got like three or four varieties. We'll make more varieties there.
To, just another comment, I noticed on the backside of the building, between Lot 24 over there, you have trees planted back there. That would be a good buffer for the air conditioners, too.
Yeah, there are, there are some trees behind the building, and again, we could find out where the air conditioning units will wind up, and we could adjust the locations to match up with where they would be.
Is that okay with you, Sheri? Might even change a species to make them lower, lower growing. Okay.
I have a question, Rich, about the septic. It seems a little small for 30, for lack of a better word, bedrooms. I mean, by house standards, what is the standard to compute the square footage of the bed for a situation?
It's actually been designed to meet the state code for this type of use, which is, it's not like a household where you go with, I know you have 200 gallons for the first bedroom, and et cetera, et cetera. We're down to, I think it's 75 gallons per bedroom, straight number. And that, including showers, including the kitchen, and the sizing that we're using, we're putting a pump system here.
I see, is it a pressure dosing?
Pressure dosing, which allows us to reduce the square footage slightly below the standard gravity flow. So we've gone through the calculation, and this is actually slightly oversized, as you see. It may appear small, but it's larger than the code requires.
It looks like the water's pretty high here. How much replacement is under it? Did it go that far yet?
There's gonna be four feet of replacement under the bed.
So it's not real deep?
No.
What about laundry?
Laundry's included as well. Yeah, laundry, kitchen, showers, and the bedrooms.
Now, are they gonna filter any of the laundry? Is that gonna run through any type of filter before it discharges?
Just, the only filtering is from the kitchen through the grease trap. There's no, there's no filtering, I'm aware, with the laundry.
It's all the bleach and everything else goes.
I believe it's like any other residential type of use. There's no commercial aspect of this. It's really house waste, kitchen, bathrooms, it's residential in nature.
Looks like a lot of drainage pipe in this shop. I would have been tempted to sheet flow the whole thing right to the pond, but...
We tried that, it was not, it wasn't easy to grade this one out.
Any other questions of the board? Professionals? At this time, I'm gonna request a motion to open to public.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. San Clemente.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Cardilikio. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Opening for questions, comments from the public?
Hello, my name is Charles Day, I'm with the Trittown News. I do. Charles Day, D-A-Y-E.
Carry on.
I just have a couple of questions for clarification's sake. First, how many parking spaces? I might have misheard that.
Thirty.
Thirty?
There's 30 spaces? And 15 of those count for the people working in the facility, and you just said that it's a residential-type dwelling, 30 bedrooms, you know?
That's not what he testified to, okay?
No, I'm asking.
Rich, wanna tell them what we testified to with regard to parking?
With regard to the parking, our plan depicts 32 spaces before we had a meeting tonight. Now we're talking about 30 spaces with room for guest, not guest parking, but arrival, a designated area for arrivals of patients, so that they're not forced to park somewhere further from the front door than needed. But there's about the need for, I think, 10 to 12 employees on the site. The balance of the parking spaces are available for guests and visitors, and we said that taking away the two spaces will leave us 30 designated spots. So we'll have approximately 15 or 17 open area spots on a regular basis that are not used by the employees, available for visitors.
I think the short answer here is that there's 11 employees, and the facility really needs 15. So there's 26 spaces that are necessary, and they're providing 30.
Okay, I'm just trying to clarify.
Space per bed.
All right. And this assisted living facility, it's gonna be housing senior citizens that can't really take care of themselves anymore?
It's more of a memory care facility.
Memory care, oh, it's like Alzheimer's and something like that?
And dementia, yeah.
Dementia, oh, okay. I was more asking because if it's, if it's living quarters, it would make sense to have whatever spaces you need for the people working in the facility, and 30 spaces for the living. So I was just clarifying why there wasn't that, but if it's a...
They do not drive to the facility.
Yeah, and that's what I was...
Then, of course.
I didn't quite hear you before when you opened up saying it was mostly people with memory or that type of issues. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else in the public wish to make a comment or ask a question? CNN, can I have a motion to close?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Cardilikio.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. San Clemente. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Professionals, any further comments, questions, board? Need like summation?
Mr. Chairman, just very briefly, based on the testimony provided this evening, and the, all the various agreements from the applicant with regard to the board's requests, all of which will be part of the record, I would ask that the board grant preliminary final site man approval for the 30-bed assisted living memory care facility.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Members of the board, it looks like this is a much better proposal, an application, than we originally saw. It was cut down from two buildings to one. So I'm going to make a motion to approve this application, that has a, driveway's been taken care of, drainage, parking has been taken care of, so there'll be a block enclosure for the recycling. We're going to remove two parking spaces, so the applicant will be working with Jack to get those parking spaces removed, so we can have a better pickup area. The inlet's gonna be moved, so there'll be more of a grass area for the filtration. There'll be onsite testing for the stormwater basin. There'll be a partial fence around the basin, so we don't have to do the whole basin then. The generator's gonna be enclosed, excuse me, the generator's gonna be moved to the enclosure of the refuse. For the private driveway, we're gonna have a 10-foot apron, and there'll be a sign, "Private Driveway," and then there's gonna be an... private driveway, and then there's gonna be an approval of the shared driveway that we'll be able to see.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll second the approval. The applicant has made some, I think, some positive changes from the original plan. The safety concern on the drive-in, I think the parking lot is gonna be a low use, and that's why I feel, you know, you've made every bit of concessions to make it safer, and that's why I will second the approval.
Okay. Any other further findings of that from the board? See, and can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Cardilikio?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Turk?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
No, 'cause of the farm land buffer. You had to expect that.
He said 100, so you gotta give me, you gotta give me one.
Okay.
Motion carries.
Motion carry.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, I'm with the board, appreciate your time, too.
Okay, is there any further business of the board? Again, Jennifer, it's been an honor having you here.
I'll miss you guys.
We're gonna miss you too.
I'll see you at the pasta.
You better.
Now I'll still come.
I, I'll have to come now.
Are you gonna start giving a test for the events?
I will now.
Okay. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, we need to go into, okay, I'm sorry.
Can I need to read this into the record?
Yes, please.
Executive session resolution, whereas Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 13 of the New Jersey Revised Statutes requires that the public shall not be excluded from any meetings of a public body unless a resolution authorizing such exclusion is adopted at a public meeting, and whereas the Zoning Board of Adjustment of the Township of Howell has determined that such a closed meeting is required to discuss certain matters which are exempted from consideration with the public in attendance under New Jersey Revised Statutes 10:4-12, namely litigation. Now therefore be it resolved by the Zoning Board of Adjustment of the Township of Howell that the public shall be excluded from the next portion of this meeting, and that the Zoning Board of Adjustment will not reconvene in public session thereafter. Be it further resolved that minutes will be kept in the meeting in closed session, and the time and circumstances under which the discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public cannot be determined at this time.
Okay.
Now we can have a motion to close.
Can I have a motion to close?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Bloom?
Second. Mr. Chair.
Seconded by Mr. Cardilikio. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Zoning Board, turn 10 after 9.